Item one, as you can see, I am not Mayor Farrell, but I am Mayor Pro Tem Joe Danley, and I am ably bodied to sit in for him as he is unable to make tonight's meeting. Before we get started with the agenda, though, Paul, I understand there is an addition to this work session?
Yes, sir. We've been waiting to hear from the Airport Authority. They had asked me on the agenda, I think back in July or August, and we just firmed it up, but since it is a work session, we thought we would just put him in at the very beginning if that's all right with the board. And they have a presentation which I think are set up on the computer screen to present to the board. So no action required on this, it's just really a presentation from the Airport Authority. And Mr. Mike Jones will be making that presentation, who's a board member tonight.
Will we go after consent agenda?
Yes.
That's what we'll do. Okay, thank you. And who is Mr. Jones? Welcome. All right, well, let's get to item one, consent agenda. All items listed below are considered routine and have been discussed at length in previous meetings and will be enacted by one motion. It is to schedule a public hearing on September 27th, 2021, at 6:00 PM for Street Abandonment, SCP-2102, submitted by Madison Realty Service. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Goodwin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passed. Okay, let's move to what we will call item two now on the agenda, and that is a presentation by the Airport Authority, Mr. Mike Jones.
Well, thank you very much, folks. It is a pleasure to be here and meet you all, and the object of today's presentation is just to tell you about all of the exciting activities that are going on at the airport, kind of, you know, raise the awareness, because, you know, if you're not a pilot, how do people don't go out to the airport, right? So what I've got is 20 minutes, I will race through it, be able to answer any questions you have. My name is Mike Jones, I am on the Airport Authority, been on the Authority for seven years, and in the seven years, we have done some really remarkable things. Now, let's see if I can get this to start. Do I, how do I make that? Oh, there's the PowerPoint thing, right? Right there, and then click, and then go to pre- Zap. Whoop. Funny how that just keeps popping up, huh? There we go. Okay, and tap, perfect. So, we've got some very interesting new developments, we have some projects to share with you that have not made it into the newspapers, and we're eager to share that with you, and most importantly, we would really like to open the door to feedback, ideas, suggestions, interests, and enthusiasms. The airport, what is the purpose of the airport? It is not to pour concrete and to have a mile and a half of stone that never gets used. We view ourselves as an engine of economic opportunity, and this is a change. In the old days at the airport, when I first got on the Authority, the idea was keep our heads down, pour concrete, don't do anything, don't make any noise. Our strategy right now is we want to help create jobs, we want to bring economic benefits to the community, and there are a whole bunch of ways we can do, making this, whoops, why did it go back? There we go. The engine for economic growth and opportunity has enabled us to look at the airport as a resource for everybody in the community, flyers and non-fliers alike, and see what can we do to help create jobs, to create careers, to make people happier around the Everybody, some people like a little bit of numbers, a little bit of finance, so I thought I'd start with just one slide, just to bring everybody up to speed. The airport itself is a small business, all right? We have about $3 million a year in revenue, we make a small profit, we handle more than 30,000 takeoffs and landings a year, which is really huge for a small county airport like this. There are 85 airplanes in hangars and another 15 or 20 out on the ramp sitting in the sunlight, which nobody likes, to have your much-loved airplane sitting in the, under the hail, the rain, the snow, so we need more hangars. However, an interesting thing, published by ITRI at the state of North Carolina government, is they do an economic impact statement of the airport, of every airport in the state, and we have now grown to the point where we are contributing $93 million to the health and wellbeing of Moore County. And that is by actual jobs at the airport, taxes that the owners pay, and secondary activities that happen in conjunction with the airport. The airport now, this was not true five or six or seven years ago, has a whole bunch of businesses on the airport. We have two separate flight schools, which is outstanding. We have a very, very busy aircraft maintenance service. We have a bunch of companies that do secret stuff at Fort Bragg, and you go over and you say, hey, so what is that silly looking airplane? It's just, oh, I can't tell you, I'm sorry. So we don't know what they do, but they've got 20 cars parked there, and they take off and go over to Fort Bragg and come back at the end of the day. We also have a doctor on the field who gives pilots their flight physicals, and we have Hertz, by the way, have any of you tried to rent a car from Hertz recently? It is really hard to do, they don't have many cars, the prices have gone up, but I can tell you, they do have cars out at the airport, and they are very, very glad to rent them out. It's been a real change. I am sad to report, we do not have commercial airline service, and because of the economics of the way the airlines are going these days, there is virtually no chance that we will have airline service in our lifetime. It's, the world is just too, there aren't enough pilots, and so what they're doing is they're putting those pilots on big airplanes that fly to the big cities, and they make a lot more money than flying 20 golfers here from Chicago. It's that simple. But everything else we're trying to do is good news, okay? How many of you have been out to the airport for some of the events? And of course, the big one is the Festival d'Avignon, that's coming up on the last week of October. If you haven't bought your tickets yet, I urge you to, it is two days of music and food and crazy airplanes. We have every branch of military coming and parking airplanes there and allowing people to go on. It's going to be a great, great event. But we do all these other things. Do any of you have small children who go trick-or-treat, or small grandchildren who go trick-or-treating and stuff? The Halloween trunk-or-treat that we do, which is what this picture is, and you can see the airplanes behind, we put goblins on the airplanes and string, you know, skeletons and stuff, and we had 3,000 children and their parents come out Halloween two years ago before COVID, and we're doing it again this Halloween, you know, good weather, let's hope it's sunny, and so on. Have you got anyone in your family who's done a Young Eagles ride? Twice a year, volunteer pilots at the airport give free rides to hundreds and hundreds of kids. So if you see that in the newspaper, you hear about it, and maybe you have a 10-year-old who's kind of excited about getting in an airplane, we do a really good job, make them feel very welcome and so on. So, all sorts of good activities that are open to the public, and we hope you will come and enjoy them. Here's something you may not, this is sort of the beginning of the stuff you may not have heard of. The airport, in the past couple of years, has been working with the community college, and we have created a program called the Professional Pilot Program. And we have actually now, in this last year, graduated 11 people with associate's degrees in aviation. That's more people than they graduated in the auto mechanics department, which of course I think is a much more understandable profession. So, we have graduated 11 people, some of them are pilots, but they have all gone to get careers, and the young man on the right, Troy Williams Showalter, over there on the right, actually now works at the airport, and he's terrific. So that's all part of our helping people create jobs, get jobs, build careers, look at options that maybe they weren't aware that they had in earlier days. So, the Sandhills, the community college is doing great on that, they hired really good people. Now, the airport, as a small business, constantly has to be reinvesting in the business, and to do that, we have a whole bunch of things that we're buying and building and budgeting for, and none of this, not one bit, uses tax dollars. Everything is funded basically at airports and gas stations. We sell jet fuel, we sell aviation gas, and if you think of it like an Exxon or a British Republic BP station, that's what we are, except we got a really long driveway. And so we sell approximately $3 million worth of fuel a year, and we are funding all of these projects out the door, over the years. The one about the new main hangar door, huge hangar door, the older one is just collapsing and not safe and not reliable. So that's an example of the investments we're making. If anybody has questions, by the way, don't hesitate to ask. But however, airports are very capital intensive. We are the only airport in the entire state of North Carolina that does not get support from the local cabinet. We are the only one, and that's a bit of a problem, because big problems like this are happening. Airplanes are getting bigger, they're getting heavier, they're putting wear and tear on the parking areas, they're called the tarmac, and we're ending up with these cracks. And in fact, we have some planes, planes that are so big today, they simply can't park here at all. They literally would sink into the pavement on a hot summer day. So, and that circle in red shows you where our oldest parking areas are, and that all needs to be ripped out and replaced, and sadly, that is an $8 million job. It's just amazing what this stuff costs these days. You say, really? And they say, yeah, because it's, you know, it's got to be 18 inches deep and all of that. So, we have some other projects, like fixing that ramp that I just showed you, and these are funded through grants. The grants come from the Federal Aviation Authority, the federal government, and are administered by the state, and we have done a really good job on winning grants. We write them up and submit them, and it's amazing, they're very, very helpful. So we're working on that. I call your attention to this blue one right here. We are actually having to buy some of the properties around the airport and tear them down and extend our fence line. 20 years ago, 25 years ago, we had a master plan done, and the FAA came out and looked at our, they said those buildings shouldn't be there, but, yeah, they're pretty far away, it's not a big deal. This time, they came out and looked at it, you know, because they'd always come back. The rule is the FAA, no, I won't tell you, our pilot jokes, that's another day. But they came out and they said, those buildings are too close to the runway, and we said, they've been there for 40 years, they're too close to the runway. So we have actually had to go get a grant to buy that property and move our fences out so that it's in compliance with their new, more stringent, and they've actually shortened our effective runway until that's done, which of course hurts the jets full of golfers that come in. Anyhow, as you can see, we've got about $36 million worth of projects in the next 10 years, and the county and the airport will be funding $4 million of that, and the federal government will be funding the remainder. Any questions, so far so good? Okay, this gets to the exciting stuff, and I have to tell you, this really, this is a volunteer job, none of us get paid, and the, some of the members of the Airport Authority are working literally 30 and 40 hours a week to make these things happen. It is so exciting for all of us, and it's all focused on this economic growth and opportunity story. First, we're right in the beginning of building new hangars. We have a waiting list of 45 planes that need hangars. Airplanes, you know, are expensive and they're relatively fragile, one hailstorm can destroy millions of dollars of airplanes, and so to get them in a hangar is a good thing for everybody, means the tax dollars come here, the gas sales come here, the whole cycle of economic prosperity booms right along. And we have grants to build these, so that's a very exciting development. Then we have some old hangars. These hangars are so old and so rusty, that rust is falling off the roof onto the airplanes below, and we've actually had to string tars inside, like a tent inside the hangar, to keep the rust from tapping, falling on the airplane. And we've put in a proposal to knock those three old hangars down and replace it with one nice, big, modern hangar. But this is really exciting. We've had so much fun with the Sandhills Community College, we've come up with a proposal to create a mechanics school. Airplane pilots are scarce, there aren't enough pilots for all the airplanes that the airlines need to fly. Mechanics are even more scarce, and if you get your associate degree at a community college and you have your license, you actually have to have a mechanics license, just, you know, like a pilot does, you can go up to Raleigh Durham International and start at $60,000 a year, and it just goes up from there. It is a great job with almost infinite career opportunities. So if we can start one of those schools here, and we have the land for it, we got the space, we got the community college literally right across the street, I think that would be an exciting way for 10 or 20 or 30 young people to really start to build new careers. Now, we're working on a restaurant, you may have seen this was in the newspaper a couple of months ago, but we're working very hard to see if we can get a restaurant out there. And to have a restaurant where you can sit and watch the airplanes and have a pina colada would be a huge boon, create jobs, and, you know, create opportunities for people to interact with the airport. So that is definitely in the works, and we've got, we sent out a proposal, we've had 18 companies respond to us with inquiries about it. Now, some of them said, oh, we want a big, giant, separate building, which we don't have the room for, but, you know, not all 18 are candidates, but maybe 10 or nine or seven, we'll work it out. Here's something that you probably did not know, this airport's been here since 1929, and that is Amelia Earhart in front of our hangar, and her husband. And so we've had all sorts of celebrities fly in here over the year. What we would like to do is take this hangar, which is still there, but I must confess, it very bad work there, lift it up, move it across, set it down, and turn it into a hangar, celebrating more counties involved in World War II, which was an event called the Knollwood Maneuver, which was the first large-scale practice aerial assault, and they dropped 10,000 soldiers in parachutes based out of our airport. And this was a test for D-Day, because a lot of the generals said that won't work, you can't jump out of an airplane and fight and do all that, and with the Knollwood Maneuver, they proved it could be done. So we think we take this old hangar, which was there during the Knollwood Maneuver, set it up, get some air conditioning, and have the artifacts and stuff that's on display. That would be a really cool accomplishment. And here's the last one. This is a bit technical, but we want to rebrand the airport. We want to make it easier for pilots out in the rest of the world to find us and to appreciate the value we have. The name of the airport right now is Moore County Airport. It doesn't have the word regional in it, and it doesn't have the word jetport in it, and those are two words that pilots say, ah, you've got long runways, you've got maintenance services, you can handle the more sophisticated airplanes, I'll go there on my way to Florida or on my way back up to New York City, because if something goes wrong, I know you can take care of it. So those are some of the things. Here's what the airport actually, that's what it looks like, a little tiny red dot that says Moore County SOP, and people don't know anything about what it is or why they should stop there. If you look at, it's not on this chart, but Raleigh Executive Airport used to be called Sanford, now Raleigh Exec, and there's another one, Triangle North Airport. Those airports are really busy, because people can see they're near the Raleigh community, and that's where they want to land and go to. So, that is my story about all the things we're doing, and I would be pleased if you have just any other questions or issues or comments or concerns about the airport, be pleased to answer them.
Board, any, anything of Mr. Jones, based on the presentation? I must admit, you threw a little history in there, and I was hopeful that that wouldn't occur, because Mayor Farrell would be able to talk about the Knollwood Maneuver in detail, and-
Was he actually there?
No, but he's a, he, well, I kind of liked that. No, no, he is, Mayor Farrell is a lifelong Moore County resident Aberdeen citizen and a history buff extraordinaire, of all things, military history. And so-
Perfect.
It would have been kind of fun to listen to him add on to that piece of history, unique to Moore County and to this airport.
Yep.
And I'll look for another day for that, but I appreciate the presentation.
I appreciate it very much. And anybody who wants to come out to the airport and get a tour and see what we're doing, we are more than pleased to help you.
How do you get the tickets?
It's the Festival d'Avignon online.
Okay.
Yep, and they're a company that's original, a regular airline. May I give you my name cards, just in case?
Absolutely.
You can find me in the meeting, and again, we want to be as open and available, if you have any ideas-
Thank you, appreciate it.
Or opportunities.
Thank you, we enjoyed your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, it was a pleasure. And I'll be in it, if you have any-
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it, yeah, good to see you. Thank you, comment, appreciate it. Okay.
Can I ask one? I got one.
One more follow.
Yeah, so you're anticipating renaming it, what would be, you threw out jetport, you threw out some other things, have you-
Moore County Regional Jetport would be fine.
Okay.
Tiners Regional Jetport would be better, because Tiners is a brand-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're open to any kind of suggestion.
Right.
We have another one, the George C. Marshall Executive Jetport. That would, that wouldn't be bad, because George Marshall would be a very, very, very hero.
Right.
And lived here for years.
That again would have elicited a comment or two from the mayor. So, so let's stop it, two for two, and, no, I'm teasing, but-
By the way, one other thing, the mayor's, we have a brilliant new airport manager named Scotty Malta, who is a professional airport manager. Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And Scotty Malta is our new airport manager, and he was not able to make it tonight, he's very sorry about that, but he is available for phone calls and discussions and anything else, he's a great guy, widely recognized in the field. Thank you, very enthusiastic.
Thank you very much.
It's contagious, thank you very much.
I hope you have a good meeting, everybody.
Thank you very much. All right, that completes item number two on the agenda, we'll move to item number three, consider approval of the ordinance to temporarily close approximately 250 feet of West South Street and approximately 200 feet of Tarbell Street on Saturday, October 30th, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Good evening, everybody. Unfortunate that you had to put him right before me, but hopefully we can all use a little bit of calm presentation. So this, again, is going to be one of those typical temporary road closures for another one of our growing downtown traditions. We have, in the past, offered the opportunity for youngins to come and trick-or-treat around downtown Aberdeen, and the way we do that is by encouraging downtown businesses to open their doors and provide candy for folks in a very typical trick-or-treating fashion. Last year was one of the more organized efforts, I'm not exactly sure how long we've been doing this, it might be a newer, a newer tradition. Last year, though, we had over 300 people come to downtown just for a couple hours of trick-or-treating. A lot of businesses reported increased sales, and the businesses that didn't report any increased sales still enjoyed the opportunity to open their doors and provide candy for folks. The request today is for a road closure between 1:00 and 8:00 PM, for an event that's going to take place between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, right here on South Street. The footprint of the event is going to obviously be right here, we wanted to extend it to Poplar Street, so nobody has to take, make a U-turn and get awkwardly stuck in that, in that road closure area between Poplar and Tarbell. But the idea is to have food trucks and vendors and have a little bit more of a central starting point for the trick-or-treating initiative. One of the issues we had last time was people came to downtown Aberdeen and didn't know where to start, we didn't know if we should have maps in every business, or if we should have folks go through a kind of a route, and we thought it might be a little bit safer to offer a route, or at least a suggested path for the kids to travel. This would also offer an opportunity for parents to grab a drink or grab some food before they go on the trick-or-treating endeavor. We'll have a lot of vendors that will, some themed and some off-themed, just to showcase their local products. Every South Street business, I believe, is helping, all of the business located on the east of Tarbell would be participating, are helping Felicia here with 1350 organize the event, and then we have over a dozen other businesses in downtown that will be offering candy and other treats for the trick-or-treaters. So again, the idea here is to create kind of a centralized gathering point that's kind of protected from, protecting pedestrians from vehicles and giving them a place to sit and shop and eat and drink before, after, during their kids are going and trick-or-treating around downtown. The closure is again from 1:00 to 8:00 PM, the event will be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, and those extra two hours are just to give folks time to get set up. As a part of the new road closure process, we did meet with representatives from the police department, public works, and building and planning and zoning, obviously, and we are implementing some new safety protocols, especially when we're closing down portions of South Street like this, we will have, we will require event organizers to have volunteers posted up at the road closure signs, just because we know the road closure signs don't block 100% of the road, and somebody might think it's not a huge deal if they sneak around the, sneak around the road closure sign just to park, so event organizers will be not only responsible for having a vested volunteer kind of be at the road closure to make sure nobody slips by, but also they'll be responsible for putting the no drinking signs, the no drinking beyond this point signs out, we're looking into providing those. And I do believe the event organizer is in contact with PD to reserve the officer, because there will be alcohol vendors and folks consuming alcohol in the closed portion of the street. Is there any other requirements that we laid on you last minute? I, as far as I know, it's generally supported by public works and PD, and of course, planning and zoning, and has been endorsed by the Downtown Aberdeen Advisory Board. And with that, any questions for myself? Happy to take them.
So you said there'll be other people participating, like over on Main Street, can they walk over there and also get candy?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yeah. So, yeah, the ideas for as many businesses in downtown to offer their trick-or-treating services, if you will, we're going to create a map.
Yeah, that'd be good, have a map, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a map that will show you, because, and there's some folks that don't, you know, I'm not going to speak for anybody in particular, but I know some business models don't really jive with kids and candy and sticky fingers, if you're selling kind of fabrics or anything like that. So, you know, if you don't want to participate, it's okay, some folks are putting, you know, we also heard from, you know, there's second-story offices in the Farrell Building, and they, last year, obviously, nobody's going to come upstairs to go get candy from an office space, but they went and had a table out front and just engaged with people on the street, so. There will be opportunities for the businesses to participate that don't want kids inside their store with chocolate fingers.
Any other questions? I know, I know, and I can't recall ever, in my time on the board, that South Street has been closed for an event, so I know that that draws a lot of angst from folks, because that is a major thoroughfare.
Yeah.
And even though it's a small portion, it will require major routing, you know, around through Main Street. You know, I think that ideally, we've got to do it at some point, because obviously the folks on South Street are in it to win it, they want to provide opportunities and open up that side of town to show they are open for business, just like the banners are going to say. So, I think it's important, I just know that as a staff and as a town, we have to be mindful that that is a busy road, and it will be busy for a lot of folks that day as we move through this event. But I applaud, I applaud the tenacity to continue to look for ways to open up South Street and provide meaningful events for town. So, are there any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we close South Street for the Halloween bash on October, is it 31st?
30th, sorry.
30th.
In Tarbell.
In Tarbell.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Beavers, seconded by Commissioner Bowles, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, the motion passed.
Commissioner Dale, I just had a question, not regard to that, but on the Halloween issue, and I don't know if the planning staff has heard, any other towns, have any other towns announced that they're going to encourage Halloween to be on the Saturday instead of the Sunday night this year? I haven't really heard myself.
Is that a question for you? Yeah, I have not.
I have heard you do it here.
Yeah. Yeah, I might want to check into that, because I know that question, and I don't know if Virginia's aware, the towns practiced in the past, I can't really think of a time since I've been here that maybe one time that we changed the date from one night to another. I know sometimes Friday nights and Sunday nights seem to be kind of more difficult sometimes for some families, or if we- Or if we've not done that. No.
Well, I would think it's not, it really wouldn't affect any business except maybe
No, I'm just talking about Halloween in general.
Right, but it's going to cut off at the, at the...
Not, not talking about this season.
He's not talking about that. He's just talking about Halloween in general.
In general, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be a question brought back or if it's an issue.
We'll, we'll look into it.
More considerations to take a look at it.
I didn't even know that towns could change Halloween. That's pretty interesting. Just to make it more accommodating.
It's encouraging. The town's encouraging.
So right now, we'll look into it, but right now, we'll just, we're not going to make any announcement about changing or anything and we'll, we'll see if we can't find out if there's any other moves afoot because typically if you go at the same time, it's easier to, um, you know, roll out or, you know, make that announcement. And, um, I'd say Sunday is the time you get, the only time you really get some questions about, about moving Halloween to another night, school and other issues. So I just want to let you know.
That's a good point. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, moving from item three to item four. Discussion on Swaree on the South, the parking expansion.
Hello, um, at the last meeting, um, the Swaree on South owner had come and spoke of some of the concerns that she had and the, um, Board of Commissioners had asked staff to look into some possible options for her. Um, we have three that we included in the packet. I can read those again or if you've all read them, if you have any questions. Um, they're pretty much all combined into the same thing. She can keep it as it is now and that she would not be in, have any non-conforming issues with that. Um, if she chooses to make any changes, she would basically have to do a site plan and come back in front of the TRC Committee for review. And we can absolutely let her know and go through all of that with her again.
Does the board have any questions on the options that were presented by the planning staff based on the presentation, previous presentation?
I don't know. I think at the last meeting, I, I think I just threw out the, the notion that if the town owned it, then it could be, um, maybe revitalized, you know, at our expense, but it's their property, so we can't do that. But it would be, um, an asset to it, to all the businesses if we had another parking area because we've talked about the need for parking in downtown Aberdeen.
Yeah, now it's my understanding, if I recall from the presentation, that, uh, uh, this individual, the business owns this property.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, you know, I guess, I guess from my standpoint, parking for all of us is a concern. It's something that we've instructed the staff to go after, really try to get, uh, to solving some of the, the challenges. I tell you, one of the things that I think we ought to consider in this particular case is I don't think there's anyone on this board, I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, um, or anyone really in the town that would not acknowledge that prior to 1 January 2020, that was parking. People used it as parking. I think the church adjacent to it used it as parking. I think, uh, folks found it advantageous to park when there were events. So I think, I think what I really saw, me personally speaking, in those options was not how do we get to a yes, but how do we go through another process based on a legitimate UDO from 1 January of 2020? What I would like to propose to the board for maybe direction to the staff is, does it make sense, since we can acknowledge that this was parking prior to that, and on 31 December of 2019 it was parking, that we could recommend that the town look at this as a non-conforming use? And allow the business owner to put gravel down, which would improve the lot from the sand and the challenges that we have, not only as a town, but as a business? And then move forward together, understanding that's something we probably need to continue to look at down the road when maybe financial conditions, maybe the town is in a better position to partner with, but at the same time, it allows this business owner to improve this, which they have agreed to do, but under a non-conforming use. Which would then preclude them from having to do curb and gutter, come before the TRC for this particular case. And that's only because I, I drove around town, I see the parking options, I see what we're being afforded now, and here we have someone who wants to improve it without really having to go through a lot of expense initially because I think down the road, it's going to make sense to look at those options. But that's what I offer up just as maybe a potential solution so that they can get to improving the situation that they currently have.
I second that notion.
Oh, I, I wouldn't go this so fast. Um, I think we need an opinion on that, whether that's legal and acceptable, um, not to staff, but whether...
I said, I said, I second that notion, not that motion. I said notion. I think, I think the, I think the idea was in trying to get the board's temperature for that and, and...
We need to...
And take a real look at that.
Uh, we just need to, we, we need to look at that.
Sure.
I'm just not sure we can declare something because we want to a non-conforming use here and not there. Um, that's my concern with standard going forward. I mean, that would be the question I would have.
Well, I think that's in the first thing under staff, um, previous determinations that although it's vacant and possibly used as parking now, it wasn't previously. And so that's why that we do not consider it parking currently because it was not vacant before there was buildings that were over that way. And staff has determined the existing use for the parcel is vacant. This vacant use type has been present since raising the Farm Bernies Hardware several years ago. While evidence of parking currently exists, this does not indicate an allowed or vetted use type for the parcel. So, and we gave her the option of having it licensed, um...
Well, yeah, I guess I don't, I don't want to relive the, that discussion.
An engineer to come in.
I guess the question is, can we do something that's different? Acknowledging everything in that memo, can we, is the board authorized to do that? And that, that's, that's a different question, which I think we just need to find out.
Yeah, I, you know, because I, 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 I believe it was used for parking. I've seen it used as parking.
It's used for parking now.
Right. And it's used for parking now, but...
But it wasn't declared a parking lot.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. So I think it comes down to, does this town on 31 December, uh, have the authority to declare something like that, something else other than what we would? And I think it really just comes down to, how do we get to yes and partner for this business to get at improving something that I think confidently will, will be improved under the current UDO down the road, but right now it's just not, not feasible. And I think that we can get there if, uh, if, as Paul says, we do due diligence on that course of action, which, um, I think is in the eye of the beholder. And, and I, I know that's why we have you to make those determinations from a legal standpoint to ensure that this board is protected.
Right. We'll definitely follow up on that, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Thank you very much. All right, finishing out four and moving to five. Consider approval of NC DOT relocation agreement relating to utility relocation on North Poplar Street.
So Mayor Protem, you've got the agreement and this was, um, as we discussed, I think two weeks ago at the regular meeting, this is the same agreement that was, um, offered back in 2019 for consideration. And just to give you the, the high altitude view, you know, this is in relation to the US-1 Improvement Project. So Southern Pines has a water line on US-1 that to do the US-1, the big improvements later in 2025, I think is when they'll start, to do tho-those improvements, um, the DOT needs to have Southern Pines relocate its, this is the main water line from US-1 to another location, in this case, Poplar Street, um, to allow for the right-of-way to be developed on US-1 with the, the new project. That's the reason all this discussion is going on. So there was a delay and so now we're to the point where they're ready to start kind of doing the preliminary steps on the US-1 project, including, um, um, other related projects like moving utilities before that project starts. And so we're picking back up to where we were two years ago with this agreement, um, same basic essence of agreement. I passed out, I just got today, some comments from TC. Most of them are just kind of, just a little clarification here and there, all of which I endorse. That's on what I passed out for you in that, um, in that, um, that two-page memorandum from, from our town attorney. And the answer to page two question, um, is as it's written is what was intended. There was no mix of Elm Street and Peach Street. They're two different markers for two different reasons on that. So as it's written in the agreement is fine. The other changes, as you go down, you'll see at page three, page four, four, five, five, and five, they're relatively minor street, um, adjustments. Those are all fully acceptable and, and, um, TC was just kind of tightening things up with that agreement. So I would, I would ask if the board's inclined to make this approval of this agreement to incorporate those changes and we'll try and make those changes. Um, I think we can do it to the document that DOT sent. Um, if not, we'll make sure they get these to incorporate into their agreement. So the process for this will be for the town to approve that DOT agreement. And again, what this does is it gives us a reimbursement of $375,000 to take care of our lines once these relocations occur. We're not out of pocket for the lines or relocations. This money is to take care of our water and sewer lines that are existing, that are not getting rebuilt or relocated, that are there because some of them are older to make sure they're going to be okay. And most of that is going, um, um, from Peach Street by the fire station going north on, on Poplar to make sure those lines are going to be intact. If there's a problem, we have a cash reserve to fix and repair them. So really, it's a pretty good deal in the scheme of things. The best deal probably would have been for them to rebuild them all, but they weren't inclined to do that. It's a little bit bigger cost, so we talked them all the way up to, um, from Maple Street up to the Peach Street. Is that right, Harold?
Elm, Elm, Peach.
Elm, Elm, I'm sorry, from Elm to Peach for what had to be replaced at their cost entirely. So past that, they, um, they weren't inclined to do any further, but they were willing to give us this money to make sure. And the lines could be fine, there could be no impact to them at all, and then we can use, um, those funds for other water and sewer, um, uses or just keeping a reserve fund for that general area of downtown. So the next step, if this board's inclined to improve that agreement, is to get that finalized, send the, um, the approval over, uh, back to DOT. And then DOT has got to get its agreement approved by its statewide transportation board. And then once they get that approved, then that part of the project would, would start sometime later this year or early next year.
So Paul has an approval tonight by the board. Approval then, unless the town attorney has any additional language changes?
Yeah.
The same approval? Because it looks like there's two approvals here.
Yeah, it's, it's an approval subject to any changes by the town attorney. Now, he made these changes. I was just afraid he wouldn't be able to get to it by today. Um, these are probably it, but I also know how it goes. I would still give him a little bit of leeway and he's not going to change anything, but I would call up substance. It would just be a whereas here or an adjustment there. And anything that he changes would only be to help us or tighten our, our view of, of the contract. I think he's good with these changes on the document as it exists, but I would probably still leave that in there. I just, I like that language because that in case he sees something, yeah, we really need to do that, or something else comes up, he can address it, um, as long as it's not changing, you know, the real substance of the amount or some other, um, substance that obviously the board should be approving that, you know, that issue.
No, I, board, I, I mean, that, that's kind of what I saw. There were two intrinsic approvals here. I wanted to know, at least if we're aware that unless there were substantive changes, that this approval would approve that agreement.
Right.
Okay. Any other, you know, questions?
Can I ask a question about the timeframe or how long will this project be in construction? Is there any way to know?
How long will the what be?
This project, how long will this project be in construction as far as from the time they remove the lines and re-put them on Poplar and then dig up Poplar and...
Harold, do you have an estimate?
Is there a way to know?
I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess nine months-ish.
Yeah, I'd probably say, I'd probably say construction timeline, um, the whole, whole project, probably, probably nine months.
Nine months. And will that interfere with traffic? That shouldn't interfere with any of the traffic down Poplar?
Oh, yes, ma'am, it will.
Okay. I mean, in case, in case citizens come back and say, why are you guys doing this? I just wanted to know, you know, more...
The, the entire, entirety of the project and the impact on Poplar won't be that long. It won't be nine months, but the, the construction window, uh, because it is an 18-inch water main, they're relocating down Poplar. They're relocating our water line on Elm, up Poplar all the way to Peach Street, and they're relocating our sewer on Elm up to Peach Street as well. In addition to relocating Southern Pines' 18-inch water line, so, um, but they'll section it off. It won't be, you know, impacting the whole corridor at the same time.
So it's not just to accommodate Southern Pines? It's, it's needed for us as well, Aberdeen, we need it for our lines. It's not just for the water pressure that we've been discussing for the Southern Pines?
Not really. I mean, it's really, it's really to accommodate the US-1 project.
The US-1 project?
Yeah.
And so, um, so this will actually, will they be dug actually in people's yards, the, the water lines? Will people's yards have to be dug up to place them?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay.
No, it, it, uh, the majority of this project's entirely within the street.
In the pavement?
In the pavement.
I mean, it'll be...
And we will repave our...
As these projects go though, I mean, what is a right-of-way and what's somebody's front yard sometimes is some kind of a...
Right, that's what I was thinking and, you know, somebody might come up later and...
Been there, done that before, we all know. Um, so there will be disruption in the front of people's property, but as, as Harold indicated, that is right-of-way and we have to do work there and I'm sure there'll be some, some questions. So we'll have to do, uh, you know, a public information, um, you know, flyer, make sure everyone knows what's going on and just make sure that we're ahead of, of that.
Before you, you know, start construction, give them plenty of heads up that they know this is getting ready to happen and dig up their yard, you know? We don't want that to be a eyesore un-announced.
I think their initial, uh, intent is to have this line, I think in the meeting that we were, we were in, have this line relocated, utilities relocated. That way after the, the US opened in 2024, then they can begin the US-1 project directly after. Utilities will already be out of the way, so, um, but they still have to go through design and then let date and then awarding bids, so exact timeframe, I, I would, I wouldn't want to give you a date. Sometimes for 2024.
Oh, okay. Not this year, right now? Okay.
No, they have not completed design.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I would, I would ask, just based on that comment, uh, Harold, that, that as the project nears and work is getting ready to be started, that possibly a presentation showing the exact portions of Poplar and kind of the, the notional timeline, uh, happens and then we can then reaffirm our, our messaging and who it's going out to and, and right amount of times and then, and that'll, that'll maybe, uh, stave off some, some previous projects where, where...
Yes, sir.
We learned some tough lessons, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. If there's no other discussion, do I hear a motion on this?
I make a, I make a motion that we approve NC DOT relocation agreement relating to utilities, uh, utility relocations on North Poplar Street as amended by the town attorney and submitted to the board on the 13th of September 2021 and pending final approval by the town attorney.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Bowles and a second by Commissioner Laney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Closing out item five and moving to item six, other business. Board, is, is there anything that you have for other business to add?
Just reminder, Malcolm Blue Festival this Saturday, correct? Everybody? Malcolm Blue this Saturday, when, it's going to be great to have it back, you know? Uh, I think we read in our report that the grist mill was cleared out, but the, the construction yet hasn't started on the grist mill.
You'll be able to walk through it.
But you can walk through it and see it, so that would be nice.
I think the fire chief has something he'd like to, like to say, uh, yeah, well, he's going to leave it to me. As, as you all know, you probably got Paul's, uh, email today that the, our new fire, our latest addition to our fire station was arrived today. our new fire, our latest addition to our fire station was arrived today, and I was there when it, when it was, when it showed up, and I actually got to ride the maiden voyage with the chief driving. So, it was a, it's a beautiful truck. It's a, a great addition to our fire station, and I look forward to seeing it in action in the next couple of weeks.
If, if anybody want to come by and see it, it's up out front in the station. It has come in, it's been, what, two and a half years of work now that we've been working on it here. It'd take us three to four weeks to get all the equipment on it and get it going. I mean, but it, it's, it's here, and, and so, anybody want to come out and run? And Mayor got to come by today for a little bit and see it.
Good deal.
If I quit talking, you can get up there maybe before dark.
I might take you up on that.
Yeah.
I might just do that. Paul, anything, other business?
No, I did want to announce, if you didn't hear, that we have a new family member as of today at 9:30. Justin's wife delivered a healthy baby girl at seven pounds and, and 10 ounces. Yes. Yeah, so Justin's life has just changed forever going forward. So, happy to hear that. And in that regard, he had talked about, and I think he was prepared, but he obviously couldn't make it tonight, to give an update on the development. So he just said he will do that at the next meeting. That's right, just on our, you know, he tries to do it every couple of months, to give that update. So he'll, he'll follow that up.
There's a lot going on every Friday report, as, as far as TRC and all those developments. What is the daughter's name?
Reagan.
Reagan. Okay, good deal. Well, that's fantastic.
Is that, is that official? Is that official?
Yes, I always have to remind them.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we've got it official. That's good. And that's awesome. Please congratulate.
And I don't know if anyone's been by to see, I'm sorry. I was going to say, I don't know if anyone has, if you guys have all been by to see the new, the Women's Military Memorial by James.
The Scout Project?
Yeah, the Eagle Scout Project that's there by the, the hut, Legion Hall, and it looks really nice. I've gone by and looked at it. It looks really, really nice. He did a great job.
Yeah, that's great. I agree. It looks very nice. Anything else from the board on other business?
I, I drove up, you know, to the school, and I was glad that we changed that speed limit. It was good that we dropped that. And I drove up there, and I just kind of drove around in there and up and down, and it seems like we're going to, it really seems like it needs some kind of a flashing light in that area. I mean, you know, I'm just drawing this out here. It, it seems like it's going to need something else, to me. And I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, I think, I think Commissioner Laney, this board has recognized that for a few years. I'm hopeful that as we move through this process, and we become more and more active in, in school years, and, and we have opportunity to see what's happening and address it, you know, together with the Moore County Board of Education, as well as DOT, that, that we will get there from here before anything serious happens, for sure. You know?
And just to, if you recall, on that resolution that we passed two weeks ago, although the DOT at that point is only going from 55 to 45 miles per hour, in that resolution, where we said, although that's the case for now, we still, as a town, would like to see a school zone, we'd like to see the speed limit lowered to 35 miles per hour. Those are both in there. So we've already made the official request that that, that would be our desire, because that's been, again, you know, something we'd like to see from the beginning. So.
Yeah, and that's where you get those flashing lights during the school zone periods of operation.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure, you know, that, that, that's in that resolution. We've already delivered that.
Well, we did say that, we did, actually, when we approved it.
Yep. Okay. If there's no other business remaining, do I hear an adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn. Is that okay?
Almost hurt my neck. I was looking left. I was like, where'd that come from?
Hey, that's second.
Okay, well, we're changing up strides.
I have to rush, or I don't get to make it.
Mayor Protem runs the, the work session. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Beavers, and a second from Commissioner Goodwin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Do I have a mo, I mean, hearing none?
Aye.
Yeah. Any opposed? That passes. See, you had me so worked up.
I threw everybody off. I threw everybody off.
I was so looking to the left, and then we had to go right here.
I wasn't, I wasn't thinking. I was.
No. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.